Motion for us to go back into general session.
So, I'll make a motion, we end the executive session and return to open session.
Okay, second? All in favor, aye? Any opposed, no? All right, we had a comment about the-
Industrial buffer.
Industrial buffer, you're welcome to speak, and then we'll move into our interviews.
Thank you very much, sir, I'll be brief. I'm Howard Page, and I'm doing the community outreach for an MDDQ project. We're gonna be having a public meeting this Thursday at the Pascagoula Senior Center at six o'clock, and it's the Bayou Cassat Industrial Buffer Project. And the idea is that along the Bayou Cassat Parkway, as we've already discussed, I was able to discuss this with everyone but yourselves, sir, mayor of Demetropolis. There's gonna be a public study of putting a barrier of trees and walls between the residential industrial areas. So, I'm really just here for the benefit of yourselves and for the audience, just to let everyone know, and I have some flyers, if anyone would like one, that the meeting will be this Thursday at six o'clock, and everyone's welcome, and your input is very much desired, because we think that the more information we get, the better decisions we're gonna have.
And this, like, adhering, you're gonna receive input from the community and then share, kind of?
Yes, what we're gonna do is we're gonna receive input from the community. There are two engineering firms that are part of the team that I'm working with. They're gonna take the input that we get from elected officials, the residents, and from industry, and we're going to hopefully come up with actually a suite of plans that then MDDQ can attempt to get funding for whichever one makes the most sense.
All right, real good, well, thank you for the announcement, six o'clock on Thursday, and it's at the Senior Citizen Center.
Yes, sir.
That's great, okay.
And Mr. Silverman's been really great helping us, sir, thanks, I really want to thank him.
Real good, thank you. Well, look, next, we're gonna move to these series of interviews, and what we do is, we thought we'd kind of start from the bottom and go up to the top, so we'll take those for the library board, civil service, and then Pascagoula's negotiated school district, school board positions. And, look, first of all, thank you all for being so patient with us, I'm sorry it's taken a while to get through the executive session, but we'll try to move these, through these in an expeditious manner. So, we'll start with the first one, number one, Kathy Blackwell Parker, would you like to come up and address the board?
Good evening, I'm Kathy Parker, and I've always loved our library, and we'd like to help it to thrive and to promote the community to realize all the great things it has to offer. You know, I know I don't know all the issues very well, but if I haven't been on the inside, but certainly would like to get involved and try to help it to thrive and continue on with the community.
Any questions?
Ms. Parker, you, some of the other candidates had experience either at the library or in first school, or Miss Wiggins has prior experience on the library board. What did your background, do you think, best qualifies you to be the next member of the library board?
Well, I'm certainly familiar with the library, it's been a long time there. As you know, from a cover letter, I've home-sold my daughter for almost three years, it's been a long time out there. I know all of the things that are available there. I worked in the library in high school, I know about how it's set up. You know, I know just how important it is. Part of my new job here is for the drug court, and part of the things that they have to do is reasonable teaching, hard, durable support, they have to spend an hour each week in the library, seeing with all the resources that are available, so I know all the resources that are available. You know, I'm certainly, like I said, I know how to do research, I know how to find things in the library, I know how to talk it up with the community. So, I think I'm certainly as equally prepared as ever before.
Pretty good, any other questions?
Just wondering, what, well, and I've been asked this of all the applicants, what is, in your mind, the top one or two issues facing the library that you would like to address if you were selected to the board?
One thing I think is that people don't realize all that there is to offer. I don't know if the people from the library go into the community, go into the schools, and let students, people of the centers that are there, know all of the things that are offered there. You know, the computer services, ancestry services, that sort of thing. I just think there might be more help and community outreach, so that people can utilize the library more. Everything I read on the internet says it's dying, people won't use the library anymore. I'd like to try to change that in our community, if that is an issue. To me, that's the number one thing, that I would think, is talking up our library, because it is such a great asset, personally, it's a fantastic library.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's have our next, Brenda Germany.
Good evening, my name's Brenda Parsons-Germany, and I was interested in the position on the Civil Service Commission and on the library board. I have a very long background and experience in human resources, recruiting, insurance benefits, and I think that I could be an asset to the Civil Service Commission in handling employee situations with verities, dignity, and respect for the rules. As far as the library board, I think that it's such a, the library is such a great asset for Pascagoula, and we have so many things, we're just on the precipice of so many wonderful things happening here. And I'd like to see that used as a tool to encourage people to come and live in Pascagoula. It's one of the really great things that we have here, along with the things that are coming along, the East Bank, the Sportsplex, the Performing Arts Center, we just have a lot of things to offer. Get back to the Civil Service Board, I would see that as a continuation of being able to give back to the community and supporting the employees who are members of the Civil Service.
I have the same question to ask Ms. Parker, what are the top one or two issues you see facing the library you would like to address if you were selected to the library board?
I, I agree with Ms. Parker, it's a lack of awareness of the programs that our library offers. We have such a wide variety of benefits there and resources available to the citizens. And all it requires is the library, you know, it's just, there are just amazing things there. The other problem I see is, and this is not something that I could do, but I think the website could be managed just a little bit better than it is, to make it more user-friendly and display the information about the library a little more effectively.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Parker.
Thank you. You're retiring here.
Next, Ms. Wiggins, Lenny Wiggins.
I'm Lenny Wiggins, I've done the library board for five years. I am, I was librarian, school librarian at Preservation for ten years, and also taught kindergarten. I think we have an amazing library, one of the best libraries in the state. And I will answer your question before you even ask, what I think, an issue about the library is the HVAC system, which I understand is being addressed at this point, because, and we have a marvelous director of the library now, Ms. Stewart. She's worked real hard on that, and we had almost come to the point where she said that the library was gonna have to close if this was not addressed. We do have amazing programs, this Google line that they had recently, on Saturday, they had over 500 people in our library, on the most, the worst weather day that we've had, stormy, where people come from all over, not just in Mississippi, there was people from out of town. I am so impressed by how libraries have changed in the last 20 years, 30 years. It's no longer about checking out books, there are so many programs, they have summer programs, adult programs, children's programs, and a lot of that has to do with who's, with the director that we have now, because she has really done very tough. So, I would like to see that continue to grow. It's a, it's a passion of mine, libraries are a passion of mine, and I would like to continue in this position.
Questions?
Do y'all help set the program alert for the director, I mean, as discussed, from the library board, or?
Yes, Ms. Stewart meets with us on the library board, and, you know, we have input in that, and also the friends of the library, which I'm part of too, has input into the program.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess at this point, yeah, would someone like to make a motion for a selection of a new library board member?
Sure, I would like to, no, Ms. Kathy Blackwell Parker.
I'll say that. We have a motion, a second, any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
So, how many? One, two, three? Okay.
I said there were no ayes, so that would be a no.
What, we did that?
Yeah, any opposed?
No.
No.
No. So, that's three, and three and three? Three votes, question, fine, okay. All right, can I hear a?
Okay, I'm gonna wrap the, even though I didn't vote, because I didn't vote aye or no, mine goes down as a aye, so that would be four.
I defer to the lawyer.
But that is your vote, aye?
Well, I mean, I did not vote, it'll go down as a aye, so I vote aye, make it easy for her.
Okay, so that's four, motion carries, okay. Ms. Parker is to do library board. Next, Civil Service Board, Ms. Germany, would you like to speak again, or do you have anything to add to that, or?
I don't have a fine position, any questions? As I said before, the reason I would be interested in serving on the Civil Service Board is to continue the experience that I have from HR. I was in the HR department for a total, from my first tenure at the city to my second, of over 13 years. And while I was in that department, I handled the insurance and benefits for all of the city employees. I did recruiting for the fire department, the planning and building department, and the recreation department. I also did conducted interviews. I'm familiar with the employment law and with the personnel policy.
Any other questions? Any additional ones? Thank you. Next, Benjamin Jackson.
I'm Benjamin Jackson, I put in for the civil service, I have five years, but I was with the police department, and I moved on. For five years, I enjoyed my time there, and I just put in, and I feel like it gives me something to give back to the people, that I did enjoy the job, and give me an opportunity to help choose and hire firemen, police officers, and, like I said, just help give back to a job that I did enjoy for five years.
Questions?
Mr. Jackson, let me ask you, your time as Pasco police officer, you served five years. Obviously, if you may be called to judge people that are, address yourself in situations where they involve people that you may have served with in the police department. Is that something you're comfortable with? It may require you to make some pretty hard decisions, and possibly even end the friendship?
Yes, right, right, wrong, wrong, and as promotions or hiring or whatever you have to do, it's the best person, whether they're a friend or not a friend, that's what you have to look at, their character and who they are, not based on the friendship.
Any other questions? Thank you, next, Randy Sanders.
First of all, let me just take a minute to say I want to thank the council for giving me the opportunity to serve in the capacity of a member of the Civil Service Board. I've been in that capacity now, this is my sixth year, and it's been an honor and a privilege to have an opportunity to give back to the community in such a way. I look at the civil service position from this perspective. You know, it's our duty as a board member to make sure that we do two things. One, make sure that our first responders, the ones that are selected for these positions, are good, qualified, adequate individuals that can fill these roles. And also, we want to make sure that the entry level and the promotion process is done in a fair and equitable way. And I think we have a good team, we have a good board together now, we collaborate well with each other. We've got, together between the three of the board members, probably about 90-plus years of experience in first responder type work and activities, and I think we work well together. Good collaboration with the existing board that we have now, and I would appreciate the opportunity to continue in that capacity.
Questions?
Randy, I'll just ask you the same question, and you probably have faced this already. Obviously, you're serving a long time ago on the Pasco Police Force, but you served a long time in the hospital, and I'm sure you may be called upon to make decisions for people that you know may even be technically friends of yours. Is that something you feel comfortable in doing, is there hesitation there for you? Just walk me through this, because being on the civil service, it's not a lot of glamour, but it can be a lot of pressure.
Right, it's not, you know, I consider it an opportunity, it's a glamorous thing for us. You know, I hate to show my age, but I have been away from the police department for so long, that most of the folks that were there during my tenure are gone. But even so, if we were still faced with a situation that a decision had to be made, and it was related to individuals that I would work with or had relations with, communication with during my career, you know, I do what's right, what's right is right, what's wrong is wrong, and would make the decision, it's what's in the best interest for the city and the citizens of Pascagoula.
All right, thank you. So...
I'd like to make a motion that we reappoint Randy Sanders to the Civil Service Commission.
Second.
Second, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Randy Sanders is selected as our ongoing Civil Service Board, along with the school district. We'll start with Mr. Max, Sonny Max.
My name is Sonny Max, and I've served on the board for the last 10 years, and I would appreciate the opportunity to serve another five-year term. There are some exciting things going on in this district right now, and I'm gonna brag on you a little bit. The last two appointees you made, and I mean, I'm serious, were just some outstanding young people, very brilliant. They come up with some good ideas, and there's so much been accomplished with all these new ideas coming out. We had kind of an old school board, if you will, but now we have young, fresh ideas, and I'm just so excited about where we're going, and I really look for more good things to come out of that district in the very near future. And I'm sure most of you are aware, this last year, we have three of the top five elementary schools in the state of Mississippi, and we have five elementary schools that rank higher than any elementary school in Ocean's Farm. And the high school, for instance, they just had 100% pass rate on their biology exam. These are things that are going on that I'm just so excited about, the opening of our new Performing Arts Center. And as far as a little background about me, I have, I know nothing but education. I tell people that I walked in the door of an elementary school, first grade, back then we didn't have kindergarten. Did, I don't think about it, but anyway, I've been in school myself. I bracked, I attended school in Pascagoula for most of my school career, and I've either been in school, apprentices, quite, taught teaching apprentices, teaching the high school for many years. I retired there, and then now serving as school board. I'm just really excited to be able to offer another five years if you so desire to.
Questions?
You know I have questions.
Oh, I don't, I'm ready for you, at least I hope I am.
Well, you know, we served on the school board together for seven years, and one of the things that we both recognize as a problem, and I hope you still recognize it as a problem, was the atmosphere. The atmosphere that made teachers, year after year after year, good, great, qualified teachers, leave this district and go to other districts to make less money to teach. And we, and we recognize that, or we recognize that then as an issue. And do you, do you still recognize or again that that is a problem?
I think there's somewhat of a problem with that, and one of our problems, though, I think that we lose a lot of teachers, is that we, you know, we have a lot of hurdles we have to jump here that other school districts don't have. As a matter of fact, we have 20% of our population that's in spank. And, you know, that's, that's a struggle every year, but, you know, if a teacher, you know, if you're not primarily a red woman, which most teachers are women, and they could go to a school and, I think, and make less money and not have to deal with the things they have to deal with, I think that's one problem, but you're correct, I think that there's still a problem there. Well, I think we're making progress towards it, while the new board is demanding a lot of things. We're, we're demanding measurable goals, in other words, we're not coming up and saying, well, let's do better this year. We're saying, we want to improve by a certain percentage, and we're demanding those things, and I think you're gonna see a big change, that's the way I feel about it.
I'm willing to hear that.
I beg your pardon?
You know, one thing that, the reason you see young people on that board is one thing that we, we wanted, is to have a vested interest in the school district, kids in the school.
Well, I can say that I always thought that not having a child in the district was also one of my advantages. In other words, we have, there was a time, you can remember, when we had, well, I say you remember, when you left the board, there was only one individual there that had children in the district. And of course, that was not the best of situations, but now we have four members that have children in the district. But one thing is that I can look at the total picture, and I can, I can honestly say that I'm not looking at what's best for my child, I'm not seeing any of these people and do that, because I don't know. But if you have a tendency, if you have a child in a situation, you kind of lean towards them. I would, I'll be honest, I would, and I think that my experience within the district, and my love for the district, I mean, to me, if this district does bad, even if I were not on the school board, couldn't, wouldn't anybody feel more awful than I do, because it's my heart, that's where I'm at, the school, that's, that's where I taught most of my life, really, over half my life I taught there, and then I served the school board, and, I don't know, it just, I have a pride for it, and I, and I think that that, with my, you know, my experience along with these young people that have kids in the district, that, that's, it's a great mixture. We have, we have, we have a legal, we have, we have construction and sales, we have CPA on the district. We have another legal person on the board, and of course, my experience as a teacher, I think, is very important to have someone that's been in the classroom, and once a decision's made, I can say, you know, I've been here, what do I make if I'm that teacher? What do I do?
And I, I get your point, I guess our point in putting parents on board, they know what's going on. And as before, it was so repetitive.
Well, you're, you're correct, of course, that's one thing that I have done, every year, I make sure I am present in the schools. You could ask any principal out there, I make sure I go, and when I go, I don't, I don't come up and say, well, I'm gonna be there tomorrow, so they can come up and make plans about, we got school board there, for example, I give them 20 or 30 minutes notice and say, I'm gonna be there in a few minutes, and I get out and I'm up in all the schools, and I like to be present in them, I like to see what's going on, and I plan to do that, you know, so that's the real point.
Good, one, one final question. You talked about the new, new buildings and the new things in the district, and, you know, there, I haven't been to the new, Performing Arts Center, and I'm sure it's really pretty, I've had a couple of thoughts here to tell you, it's really nice. But as you know, the city's in a pretty precarious position. Public funds, spending that responsibly is, is a big responsibility. And the school district has a very unique position in that they can spend kind of freely. But we're responsible for that. So, what is your view on how freely we spend?
Well, let me address the Performing Arts Center, where we had the bond, but I mean, as far as-
But how freely you spend, that's my question, not only the Performing Arts Center, I want to know, what is your view on how freely the school district spends?
Well, if you look at our tax base, and at the millage rate, we are .49 mills above what we were in 1999, 2000. And this year, while I'm on board tonight, there's plans to retire the shortfall note and lower the taxes, and we plan, you know, of course, at the LNG plant economy.
How do you know what the plans are about?
I've been informed of that.
Who told you that?
The superintendent said it, he had a discussion with the finance lady, and that there are plans to go ahead and retire that note. I've been told that two or three times, and I will expect that note to be retired if there's money, because I have been told that, and I will expect it.
You've been told that by?
The superintendent.
And he's not on his council, just to make that clear?
Right.
He, he's not employed, that's any all, he's not sitting on the council, just to make that clear?
Right.
Okay.
So, like I say, if-
So, don't take his word to the bank?
Well, the final, the final thing is our decision to board, that's our final decision. And we can elect to say, well, look, we've been told that this is what's gonna happen, and I expect it to happen. If we have to cut this expenditure right now, I wouldn't want to cut anything as far as student services, but if we can cut this and cut that, that's what we're gonna do this year.
But does anybody ever think to come back to us?
Well, if you remember back when you and I were on board together, there was a tax increase coming up, and I had a general feeling that you and I were probably only two against it, and the city council asked for a meeting with myself, and I was president at the time, and, you know, if they would not have asked for that meeting, even though we may not have been part, it was gonna go through, but I said, I think you gotta put the board on the spot there. I said, I'm gonna poll my members, and if they'll agree to a meeting, then we will have a special meeting, and we'll talk about lowering those taxes, and we did. And anytime the city has come to us, you know, for instance, on the Performing Arts Center, I wanted to get this clear, if we not already started the process and spent so much money, if we, the city was in that bad shape, I can't speak for the other four members on board, but I can speak for me. I would not have voted to go on with it, because that is money I'd save. We did not need to put on our taxpayers, considering y'all were here for something that was, because I was off to the ground, that y'all had to make, make right, and so I would, I personally would not have voted for it. I can't speak for everybody else, then.
Okay.
Mr. Max, I do have a question.
Sure.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
You got plenty, I know that.
I just wanted to make it clear that we did come to you, we did come to the board, and we did ask.
You did, you did, but we had already started the process and spent many thousands and thousands of dollars on getting this bond issue, and we would have had a lot of money wasted at that time, had we just dropped the process. And I'm just telling you that if I would have known- And I'm just telling you that if I would have known two months earlier, three months earlier, whatever it was, that when y'all found out the situation and I, it would not have been stopped. My book would have been, no, we can't do that right then. We can't put this on the system. And I'm taxpayer too, you know. I wouldn't want it in for myself and, or anybody else. But it would just, you know, I didn't know. And I can't speak for anybody else.
Mr. Backs, I have a question. We were speaking about the Hispanic, I guess you could say twenty percent of kids are Hispanics. If you were a teacher and you were trying to come up with an idea to do two things, be able to help the Hispanic kids more and also remain in the district as a teacher, what would you suggest, what do you think they need to do in order to keep them here in the district if they're good teachers? Because if they're not good teachers, they need to go.
Well, you know, I have, I'll give you an example. I have friends that teaches at the C C D I, you know, Vocabular Technical Center, I don't know if you might remember it as. But he has a Spanish student that speaks absolutely no Spanish. He has to use Google Translation, he says, so that he can get the words across to her. And, you know, those are the things. And of course, they're trying everything they could. We hired a lady as a director that's over the Hispanic population. And she does things like going to home visits and visiting these parents that do not speak English and trying to work with them and, you know, to make things better for that child in school. And if you can make things better for that child in school, then you're gonna make it better for the teacher as well.
Mr. Backs, we have decided to pass a rule to go check schools that we have, to others, to Biloxi, to behavior. A school where students misbehave, they are sent there to control their anger, their behavior. Then we have P O C, the Basketball Act, too. Those centers seem to be a kind of leagues. Are you familiar with the P O C?
Yeah, I'm familiar with P O C, correct.
The reason why I said it, because those students are there four, five weeks, six weeks, some of them they have a year, and they go back to public schools, and they're back to the system. Those are the same students. Doesn't that seem, that's kind of, you're just wasting money?
Well, what they do over there, they've implemented a system to work. A child has to reach certain benchmarks in their behavior, and the things they do, and their performance in the classroom when they're over there. And of course, I guess it's the call of the principal and the teachers that, hey, this child is doing well. You know, and then they put them back out there, and then they come back. You know, they're just basing it on, you know, how well that child is doing. If we, you know, to keep them out of there as much as we can and still put them, we know, Ms. Coleman, we thought this about, if you put a child in the P O C, they do not get the same instruction as they do in the classroom. And we face a lot of flags for going against that. But no, I agree that there's some situations where kids go in there and come right back, but there are situations where they don't. And so if they're a repeat offender, well, then they go home. We don't dare to spell them. As a matter of fact, we do that quite often, more than I'd like to say. It's a hard decision to make to expel a child from school. It really is.
Any other questions? Mr. Backs, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Bates, number two, as we're drawing our name. Next, we'll move to Ms. Malone, number three.
Good afternoon. I am a doctor, Ms. Malone. Started my educational career in Pasco Gula School District. I started as an assistant teacher. Spent my time there as a teacher, and then as a cheer coach, I was in Pasco Gula School District for about eighteen years. And then I got an opportunity to advance in my career and spend a year in the Gulfport School District as the English Curriculum Specialist. And now I am currently the Assistant Principal of Pop's Ferry Elementary in the Biloxi School District. Pasco Gula is still my home. It has been my home now for about thirty years. I'm very passionate about education and education of our youth here. Even when I left, I had the opportunity to take my children, my child too, with me. And I decided to leave them here in Pasco Gula because I do believe in the Pasco Gula School District. I do believe that education and your school system is one of the driving forces of your community. Especially when you have new people coming in, they're doing their research. And if your school district is not one of the top ones, and especially here on the coast, when they have other school districts that are not performing us, then that's why I would lose some of our families. Even in Biloxi, I get phone calls from my school, because it is a transient area that's military. Parents do call us and ask me several times, you know, I've done my research, you have a great school, we want to come to your school and we want to visit. So I want to hear that, making sure that other parents are knowing that Pasco Gula is a good school district as well. I want to be on that board to make those decisions that we educate all children. And all children are getting a very good public education. And that's why I would like to be a part of the Pasco Gula School District, School Board.
Would you be willing to relocate back in Pasco?
I still live here.
She's been working for the school district.
I could work for the school district and still on board as well.
But you, but you still live in Pasco?
I still live here.
I meant that you, but you resigned in Pasco.
I still live in Pasco.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to ask you, but you-
Yes, I still live here.
Okay, would you?
So let me ask you a question also about the Hispanic kids, since that's been somewhat of an issue. What do you think you can do to make it better for all kids, like you said, but especially the Hispanic children? Because like Mr. Backs said, he's presently there. And what would you be able to do, and what kind of ideas do you have in your mind to make it better to be able to reach those children? So they can be educated because all kids have to be taken care of. So do you have any concepts?
As, when I worked here in Pasco Gula, I worked at Comer Middle School. But we do have a lot of Hispanic students, and I was an English teacher. So one of the things that I did was making sure that those students were in my classroom. We do have the E L teachers, but I would not allow the E L teachers to pull them out of my English classroom. I wanted to make sure that they heard English as much as possible. I made them make sure they spoke English, even if they had to repeat after me. A lot of the things that we're finding as teachers, you have to make sure you care. That's the first thing. You gotta make sure you care. I hear a lot of teachers that would say, well, they should, if they're here in our country, they should automatically speak English. That doesn't happen. You've gotta care enough about that child to make sure that you are nurturing that child and that child feels welcome and comfortable with you. And once that happens and you develop that relationship with you, with that child, and you start speaking with that child, that's how you help that kid, not to feel just like an outsider. Yes, it's tough. It is. That language barrier is tough. But once you get to know them, know their culture, then they learn ours. And we're, and making sure they are accepted in our culture, then that's how we work with those kids.
When you say you didn't allow the E L teachers to pull that child out of your grade, can you explain that a little bit?
We, in our school system, we have what we call E L, English Language Teachers. And some of them are assistant teachers, some of them are certified.
Some of them are teachers.
Some of our, especially like your history teacher, instead of keeping that child in your classroom to teach the lesson that day, they might send them to the E L teacher to work on the homework, a project. And I always fuss, I say, you're missing the opportunity to teach this kid. You're just crushing them off on someone else. They're missing your whole instruction because they're over in another classroom getting tutored. When they, as a certified teacher, I feel like that was my job, to make sure that child was learning what I was teaching. And then if they needed extra assistance on some of their other classes, their other periods, then they could go and meet with that teacher. I also invited that E L teacher to come to my classroom. And you stay in here and you help them alongside, instead of moving them and they didn't hear my teaching, I needed them to stay there inside the classroom with me.
Ms. Malone, I'm, and I know I'm an attorney, and so sometimes in my world, I deal with conflicts. And if I'm with a firm and my partner represents somebody, I can't give advice to somebody who may have a conflict or some sort of adverse interest to them. And I may be showing my ignorance here, but do you see any potential conflict or tension between being an employee of the Gulfport School District and being potentially a member of the school board, asking to negotiate school district?
No, I do not. Because my heart, like I said, this is why I have not moved into your Pasco Gula.
I wouldn't expect conflicts in education. I mean, we're all, presumably Gulfport's got the same goal that Pasco Gula does. And that's to, you know, graduate the best and brightest kids they can. But I just, I had to ask that question because I've never seen anybody buy that was employed by another school.
What about the potential of time? Is it your, you say you're an assistant principal?
Right now, I am at a school that we get out at two twenty-five, by two forty-five, three o'clock, I'm gone every day. Today, I was at home by three thirty.
You don't have any commitments in the evening?
Some, very seldom. Most of the time, we do, like, P T O meetings and stuff actually every day. There are times that we do after-school things, but it's not a lot.
And you realize there are school board trainings and school board things that go after ten, for several days at a time?
And I've already spoken with my principal and the superintendent about that, and I'm like, this would be a good opportunity for you, so, okay.
And again, do you have, do you have children in the district?
I do not have any children. My son graduated, my youngest son graduated last year.
That would be awesome. And why do they call here? And what about, I'm gonna, I'm gonna present the same question to you that I presented to Mr. Backs. We have teachers leaving the district and have had teachers leaving the district for a very long time due to atmosphere. You were once a teacher here. I'm going to assume that you know what I'm talking about. Do you recognize that this is a problem? That teachers leave you to make less money in other districts?
Definitely. I do.
Are you willing to address this problem?
Yes. I've always been one of the outspoken ones, even at my school. One of the things, the problems is, we have to get better leaders in our schools that will support our teachers and to create those atmospheres to make them want to stay. Once you're there and the principal does not support you, or as far as even if it's a discipline or whatever, it makes it hard to stay. And so, yes, I am very much ready to do that.
So as a board member, there's only one person that answers to you?
I'm gonna have to have those conversations. Yes, I'm okay with that.
And then the second question I asked Mr. Backs was in reference to public monies. Big responsibility.
A big responsibility.
We have, we have a district that likes to spend money. And our city cannot sustain spending that type of money. Are you willing to say that?
Yes.
Because we cannot keep going on that way.
Well, I do love the top facilities that we do have here.
It is a lot of money that we're spending on. A lot of things.
That I can see, that you said money.
Well, there's a lot of ways that money can be used, but at some point, we have to stop.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Malone. Next, Jim Williams.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to come and board you. Why would I put myself to service on the school board? I'm old, I have children in the school system. I guess I have nothing to offer other than I've been a businessman in this community for, I guess, thirty-five years now. I worked with the county, with the county administrator prior to that. I think all of that knowledge as a business person as well, as working for a public entity, has helped reform some thoughts now. If you ask me about problems in the school system, I am not going to be familiar with those. I'm not a current sitting school board member. My children have been out of school for a period of time, that I'm probably not as familiar with that. But the one thing that I, again, I've learned in business, that I'm not the smartest man in the room, but I try to surround myself with those folks that are. And you have to build a coalition of folks that you're gonna listen to, and they listen to your suggestions or responses or your guidance in doing that. I don't think, I remember back to the days when I was county administrator with the county. Some of the worst budget conversations we had was when the school board brought their budget and laid it down and said, you'll pass this. And that's statute, and that's the way things work. But that was the worst conversation that we could ever have about trying to move the county forward and develop and build a quality of life in the county through those school systems that was necessary for everyone. Some of the best discussions we had is when there were discussions throughout about what you were doing with the dollars. Where are the dollars being spent? Why were you spending in those areas? What was your goals? Where were you trying to get to? The city, the school board members have a, when you place them over there, they are autonomous in that budgeting process and in that, but that is a trust that should not be taken lightly by the school board members in that they should interact with this council, they should provide feedback to you. There should be an ongoing conversation about where the school district is and what it's trying to accomplish. If not, it puts everyone in a difficult position of understanding how we're gonna move this city forward. We talk about retaining people in this community, having people wanting to move in or wanting to stay. If you don't have a good, sound school system, which we do, if you don't keep it on that track and keep it moving forward with the assistance of the city council, then we're not gonna go anywhere if we're pulling in different directions. And many times, it's not that we're pulling in different directions, we simply don't understand where the other is going. So we've got to develop some of those relationships that are there. My first wife was a teacher, both in the Pasco Gula School District and Resurrection. Talk about a lot of situations in the classrooms. When teachers feel like they cannot make a difference in those children in the classroom, that's when they give up. And if you, as a school board and as an administration, empower those teachers to listen to what they have to say, to listen to their understanding of those kids, what they can do to get that message across to them, that's when you have the greatest success, and you retain those teachers because they can make a difference. We know teachers don't work for the pay. Teachers work because they want to make a difference in those children's lives. And if you give them that opportunity, they will do that. And it's empowering those teachers to do what they know how to do every day, and let them be successful at their job is the mission of, one of the missions of the school board. So I guess that's my perspective. A little bit about me, I went to the school from the north. Stephen can probably understand that comment. I came from Moss Point School System, B years ago. And, but I had moved to Pasco Gula in nineteen seventy-nine and have been here ever since, other than a few hurricanes that blew me out of town for a week or so and then was back. But this is my son graduated from high school, my daughter is here, my daughter's a special needs child. Came through the Pasco Gula District. Sometimes we were happy with the progress, that they were able to provide the instruction and the guidance that they were able to provide to her as a student, other times we were not. There's always room for improvement, but Pasco Gula School District is a, is a good school district. But there's always things that can be improved. Guess my son did okay. He's an attorney, lives in Ocean Springs, he and his wife and three kids. I have a vested interest in them. And it doesn't matter that they're in the Ocean Springs School District. It matters that I live here and this is my town, and this is my school district. And it doesn't matter that I have kids in it or not. It's a vital part of the community, and I, as a community participant in this community, I'll do everything I can to make sure it's successful every day to the sun. Whether I'm sitting on the school board, whether I'm a businessman in this community, it doesn't matter.
Can you answer all my questions?
So what you're saying, you got something about especially these children, I love especially these child myself. So if, what would you do to improve, I miss you said, the services or the education, especially these children in Pasco Gula? What would you, what kind of ideas would you have?
Well, I give you my thoughts because, again, until I'm, until you can be immersed in what's going on to understand what it is, it's hard to say, here's what should be done, in my opinion. But I do know that I felt in many- But, but I do know that I felt in many cases that my child was pushed to the side in order to ensure the success of the district. Now, uh, that's a harsh comment, but that's a parent with a child that's doing everything they can, many times blind to the rest of the world, but focused on that child, trying to make sure that that child has every opportunity to succeed in the best ways they can. And when we felt that the district, uh, threw its lack of attention in many cases to that, was, was not paying attention to that child, the success of many was being done at the expense of a few. And, and just think that there needs to be a better focus. And I go back to the teachers, the teachers that are in this district are very good teachers. I'm sure there are some that, that may not measure up as much as, as they have, but I haven't met one of those. There, but there are teachers that if given the tools and given the opportunity, can deliver the education that the children need and especially special needs, which take more time. And, um, that was a, that was a constant chore to force them to do what they said they were going to do. It, it was the, the parent had to play that role of forcing that to happen. And I, I just don't think that was the best thing for the child in the school district, um, uh, to, or parent had to play that role.
Yes, I totally agree. In my situation, uh, I don't agree, if I was a superintendent or if I was a teacher, everybody would agree with what I felt was right. But, uh, I just felt like there should be more, all of the children, Hispanics, blacks, whites, all of the children. The special needs children definitely need, and from what I understand, with the money, I'm new to this really, so, I mean, I've been on council nine months or so, maybe around ten, but from what I understood, Pasca Gula had a, a lot of money that they could spend on whatever they needed, am I wrong? So things like that, you know, I feel like, you know, more assistant teachers, it doesn't need for more assistant teachers and especially these children, I mean, those, that was the weak area. If you make the weak area stronger, it's just like living in the city, you make the batteries better than, you know, it's, it's all together as a whole, so.
Well, you know, it was the whole, you're only as strong as your weakest one.
Right.
If you do not reinforce that, you not pull them up and bring them up to higher standards, then, then you are falling to the lower ones, and you just can't let that happen.
Everybody understands that, so I just felt that...
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Darlie Wixon.
Good evening. I've had to have a spot of water because I've had a sore throat this week. I'm Darlie Wixon. I'm here for the second time to present myself as a candidate for the Pasca Gula Gushay School Board. And, um, I've spent a year, I was here last year, I don't know if you remember. I've learned a lot in the year. I spent a lot of time listening to people, talking to retired teachers, um, one that was in the administration, current teachers, young teachers, middle school, parents, elementary school parents. Because I learned from last year, listening, after I went home, I watched the videos of everybody that got interviewed because I wanted to kind of get an idea of, you know, what was going on. And realized that, you know, there's a lot of things I just didn't know. I had my own ideas and my own thoughts, but I hear the same things over and over. I'm very passionate about serving the city, I have a servant's heart. I am collaborative. Dr. Demetropolis knows that when I was in the hospital, I, I like to figure out things, resolve issues, make things better. I don't like the status quo, I'm an agent of change, I always have been. I like to take a risk. I like to leave the hospital in the middle of who knows what's going on and go to Mobile and go work for a software developer, which I had never done, it was out of my comfort zone. But the man asked me to come and develop software, and I was like, I think I can do that. So I am up for a challenge. I want to serve the city in some form or fashion. I also, the school board has become passionate to me because now I have grandchildren in the system. I know you talked about people have children and the system will have grandchildren. I have a peculiar opportunity though. I have one grandchild that my daughter took out of the Pasca Gula school system and put her at resurrection. I didn't like that, you know, because I think that she's missing out on a lot of opportunities. Especially, um, as she progresses more towards high school, I think she's going to be limited. She's a bright kid, but her mother did not want her to go from the fourth grade to the fifth grade into the everybody-in-one school. She's outside of that, that elementary classroom environment. She said, "I'm not ready for her to be in a, in an environment like that where I've got to kind of answer a lot of questions about the world." I don't think she's at that point yet. So I understand that. But, um, I'm sort of like a mama bear when it comes to things like that. I understand when you're talking about special needs, special needs children, Hispanic children. The other thing, I know you've asked some questions about ideas. And I also always kind of understood Pasca Gula have a lot of money. And I could never understand when we don't have a smaller class size, when we don't have teaching assistants in classes. Things have changed. Children are not the same children we were teaching thirty, ten, twenty, thirty, forty years ago. I worked with a lot of millennial programmers in Mobile where I work. Their attention span is about that long. And I know our children the same way. We have a lot of money, I don't think we should be putting it in concrete and bricks. We should be putting it in teachers and inside the classrooms. I said that last year during my interview. I think it's important that the people that are in the classroom with our children are the very best. And I think we have an opportunity in Pasca Gula with Mayor Demetropolis. We need to attract the right teachers, the right families to come to our, to come to our city.
Questions?
Yes, I have a question, ma'am. The reason why I'm asking all these questions about the school district is because, uh, I don't know much else about this other stuff here. So I'm very concerned because I'm a freshman barber and I run across a lot of children. So like Mr. Vax said earlier, I would like to know, what would you do to try to keep the children, the teachers in this district, the goodness? What, what, what kind of ideas do you have in mind? What is anything?
I do, I have a lot of thoughts. I've, I've always got ideas, I think God just gives them to me and hopefully I find a place for them. I would think this school district should consider some type of magnet program. You know, I work in Mobile, I work with a lot of Mobile people. Mobile has a large private school system up there, because I think their public schools, maybe in the past, have failed. But they have a magnet school system, if you, does anybody know about their magnet school system? They have, um, they have magnet schools for elementary and they have magnet schools for middle school. They do not, they all funnel back into their high schools, but, um, they take, there's a baccalaureate magnet, there's a fine arts magnet, there's a STEM. And, you know, us being here in Pasca Gula and all the industry, I think we would do well to tap into the industry, the volunteers that we can have in this city, um, you know, to, we want to develop people for industry here anyway. I mean, what better way than to take bright children who are going towards that way in arts or, you know, STEM. We put them in a magnet school. If we don't have the funds to build a school, then at least produce a magnet program. You know, where you can take the bright ones and put them in there. That makes it big to your thing about the opportunity center, you know, the kids that come back and forth and disrupt the classrooms. I actually spoke to a middle school parent the other day. I asked her what was going on with her child, tell me what she thought. And she said, "Well, my kid is one of those kids that's not the brightest and he's also not a troublemaker." And she said, "And I have a real hard time seeing all the money spent on the buildings," and I'd already heard this before, "when there's no teacher's assistant in the room and when he raises his hand to get a question answered, teacher doesn't have time to spend any time with him because she's dealing with a troublemaker and she's also trying to teach." And she said, "Then he goes to after-school tutoring and the tutoring kind of fails him because the tutor sees him once a week, can't remember what we did the last week." And she said, "If I think we just had another teacher in the classroom." And, and she said, "Why can't we spend money on putting more people in the classroom, more adults? Why can't we split the classes, make them smaller?" You know, we have a good example of a great school, Beach Elementary, you know, second in the state. And, um, something goes on inside that school, it's not by accident, you know? And so, my grandchildren actually go to Beach, one does and one just left there last year. It's very diverse, I go to, you know, big assemblies and parents are there and grandparents are there. You know, we've got black, white, Hispanic, it's a very diverse group of children. I think Councilman Parker's children go there, you can agree to that. It is a great school. It's not the brightest and, you know, it looks like any other school in town, but there's something special about that school. So I think if we look at staff, we'll probably find the reason why that school is excellent. And it can be replicated all over the district if it wants to be. The other thing I've found that I hear all the time is there's a lot of misconceptions about Pasca Gula schools. We know we have a good school system. My husband's a realtor, he constantly gets calls about people wanting to come to work in Pasca Gula, but they want a house in Ocean Springs. Why is that? Because of the school system. You know, I think if we had a magnet program or a magnet school, perhaps you could draw those people that work at Chevron that come in here and they go straight to Mobile because they don't want to put their kids in Pasca Gula schools. They go to Ocean Springs, why? They don't want to put their kids in our schools. That perception needs to be changed. I agree, I'm very passionate about it. I'm old enough to have wisdom, God, the wisdom, that's where I'm asked for from. But I'm young enough, have a lot of energy and I have a lot of fight left, don't you?
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Ms. Wixon.
Thank you.
So look, we've had a, a lot of discussion and, um, now it's time to sign, make a motion.
I'm going to motion this feeling, Malone, as, as a next school board.
We have a motion on the floors, there a second?
I have it.
Okay, a second. Any further discussion?
I like this. Yeah. I do have three kids in the school district right now. One, my child, my middle child is a special needs kid. And I can honestly say the school board that they have right now is probably doing one of the best jobs. And that school district is excellent. And in my opinion, I wouldn't think to disrupt that current school board in relation to the board.
Any other comments? We have a motion, a second on the floor, all in favor, signify, signify the same, aye?
Aye.
Any votes?
Aye.
Three nays? Three nays?
Do you have it all down, Karen?
Yeah.
Oh, you need to ask her to show a hand.
All those in favor, aye, the ayes opposed? Ayes have it. Yes, we do. So Ms. Malone is the school board candidate now, will be nominated to the school board, she'll be our new school board member.
May I address the board?
Yes.
I mean, council board. I want to thank y'all for the opportunity to come here tonight and for to serve the last ten years. It, it's been a great thing. And I'd like to thank the city of Pasca Gula for allowing me to be a teacher here for thirty-two years. And I just loved it. And I'm not, I really meant what I said about the last two people that y'all picked for the school board. They were outstanding, I mean, they were outstanding, they are outstanding. They're some of the, some of the sharpest individuals I've ever worked with. And I, I, I always tell people, uh, since this last year, since we got a new school board, I said, you know, with the exception of me, I say, we've got the smartest school board we've ever had. And I truly love that. And I believe that you made an outstanding decision tonight on your candidacy. I have no reason to believe that you won't do a great job. The one thing, I talked to Mr. Burrows, I said, you know, one thing I would like, uh, if I don't get rid of one, is have someone that's in education, because now I'm leaving, I had education experience, and now we'll put you somewhere back in that with education experience. And I really appreciate it and I'd just like to shake y'all's hand and, uh, I imagine, Mr. Wixon. Thanks, guys. I ain't going with that.
I appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Well, that concludes our, um, list of candidates for the boards that we had to consider tonight. Is there any other business to come before the board?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to recess until February twenty-fourth, uh, at six P.M.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
If none is down, thank you.